Mr. Burden? You doing alright about you? You been speaking about your friend? Yeah, I know, that's why I didn't, I saw you then and then I was like, I meant to say something, I forgot. You doing alright though? I'm gonna be like Mike. I'm gonna be just like Mike.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Education Meeting on August fourteenth. We're very happy to have you here this evening. The regular meeting of the Kansas City School Board of Directors is now called to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Manser?
Here.
Mr. Barca?
Present.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Mr. Wasserstruck? Ms. Wulsey?
Here.
Thank you. If my colleagues would review the agenda, are there any objections to the approval of the agenda as presented? It would now be in order to receive a motion to approve, um, to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Same old.
Second. Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. This evening...
Yes.
Okay. Oh yeah, I forgot about her. Thank you. This is a workshop meeting, so the, I, the board recognizes Superintendent Mark Bedell for this evening's presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to start off by updating the community on the opening of schools. As you all know, we started the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year on Monday. And I had an opportunity to visit fifteen campuses, uh, along with a host of central office employees and Board of Director members. And we've been conducting these visits throughout the week, just to see how we can provide support and encouragement as they try to have as smooth as possibly, possibly of a, um, opening. Very, very pleased in terms of the momentum that many of our schools have opened the school year up with. Many of our teachers are fired up. This is the first year where we've started the school year fully staffed at a school such as Central Middle. We're fully staffed in math and science, the critical shortage areas. This is the first year that we were in single digits in vacancies. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Collier, it was eight, I believe, to start the school year, of which a good number of those were art teachers, uh, which we seem to have a major issue with across the state. And so, we are off to a great start. We are looking at about eleven hundred students short of our projections, and those numbers will continue to move up. We're probably at about ninety-two percent of our projected enrollment, and we continuously have families enrolling into the school system on a daily basis. I'm pleased with our facilities division. If you have not had an opportunity to check out truce, I think that you should go and look at the work that was done by our team over the summer. Uh, we have made a lot of progress with making additions and renovations into some of our facilities. And so, we feel real good about where we are as a school district. We have had a lot of positive momentum. We continue to have positive momentum. And we're, as I said in, in convocation, as it pertains to full accreditation, we're still headed in the right direction. We're in the fourth quarter right now with about a minute to go, and the game is tied. We're waiting on science scores, we're waiting on growth points, but we feel very optimistic that what we've put in place and the investments that this board has made, along with our faculty and staff, that it is going to pay huge dividends as we continue to move this school system forward. So, I just wanted to provide that quick update, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. If you'll allow me to break protocol for a moment, I'd like to invite, uh, any of my colleagues who did school visits on Monday, if there's anything they'd like to share and reflect on. Mr. Barca?
Yeah, I, I remember, it was like a haze of ten or eleven schools that made me go to sleep at five thirty, so thank you all for all the work you do. I could not do that every day, so thank you very much for all that. Um, it was amazing to see the kids coming in, um, whether they were the zombies at the high schools walking in or dragging themselves in. But, uh, I think my favorite were probably the elementary schools, that the kids were just so excited to get there. The teachers were so excited to welcome them, their classrooms were amazing. Agreed truce, it was just impeccable from seeing it, I think, right before we got elected. Uh, amazing, kudos to the entire administrative team here, as well as our teachers who spent countless hours playing with bulletin boards and putting stickers on things and just all the hard work, uh, work I know that went into making the first day of school happen.
Dr. Jones? We'll just go in order.
Sorry, I don't want to skip anybody. Uh, no, I was really encouraged, like Manny says, I would echo what he says, just the excitement of the students was really good to see. Um, and I was struck by the community partnerships that I saw at a couple of the schools that I visited, where, um, they created this whole receiving line, um, of people pastors, preacher, I mean, just people from all over who welcome kids as they get off the bus, and I was able to join that line, so that was really exciting, and I thought that was a, a great partnership that had been formed, so this was, I enjoyed that day.
Um, one of the things I want to, uh, just kind of give kudos to also, not only the first day of school, but the convocation this year for me was another big, um, win. And I just want to give a shout out to the group that is responsible for that, because I know it takes a ton of work. And, um, it just, you know, it is a great way to kick off the year. And I think what I saw on Monday was actually one of the smoothest, so this is my fourth start of school as a board member, and it's kind of, I can't tell if it's a good thing or a bad thing, I kept wanting it to be like a little more like, and it's so smooth, it was so smooth, once you got into the buildings. And I can't begin to tell you how many principals, when I would talk to them, and I have pretty good relationships with principals, um, that the, that it seemed smoother. Um, and I don't know if it's that people put in the time over the summer, or if it's that the PLCs are working well together, um, or things are just starting to gel, but, um, the schools that I was visiting seemed to be just kind of easing right into the school year, and everybody was super excited to get back and be with students, so that was my observation.
I think that the, I just want to echo that it takes an enormous village to get a school system of our size and, and scale ready for school. And what I observed were teachers who were highly energized, standing in their doorways, greeting each child. Um, almost every teacher I saw had the most welcoming classroom, beautiful, gleaming, bright and colorful. Uh, I felt so good about what I observed on Monday, and I am feeling so good about the work that happened over the summer. So, thank you so much to everyone.
I will say to you, perhaps the, probably the thing I'm most impressed by is, um, the way a lot of the divisions came together, but we had over eight hundred teachers show up to our summer institute. And, you know, that, that tells me that we have a teaching, a teacher working workforce that wants to continue to grow. They want to get better pedagogically, they want to grow professionally, and also in how they want to build relationships with students. Um, that's during their summer. They didn't have to come and do that institute. And then that also tells me that the quality of what we're trying to do with professional development has gotten better each and every single year, because if you don't have a quality, a quality, um, le, a high quality, level of quality for your professional development, people just aren't going to come. And we've seen that in the past too, and I'm looking at Angie here, because we've had those concerns. I would say, why don't people come to our PD? Well, you need to go and see for yourself, she told me that. But in any event, um, it has gotten significantly better, and I feel like there is tr- true alignment as a system. And hopefully, we'll be able to see a lot of that as, you know, we continue to look at the performances of our school district against other school districts, um, in the state. So, thank you all for, um, in my opinion, a, a great opening of schools, but I, you know, will say this, we, alright? We have work to do. We have work to do. We are far away from being perfect, and I don't have a problem s- sitting here stating that li, on live stream. We have a lot of work to do, and we will continue to get better every single year at it. Okay, it's still me. So, at this time, um, we will have our presentation on our zero point zero equity policy. Uh, Dr. Darryl Davis will conduct this presentation, and, um, I think as he's presenting, I'll stay quiet, but probably will chime in as we get towards the end. Uh, he and I had an opportunity to attend an equity symposium in Ithaca, and it was probably one of the best, uh, symposium of thought leaders, uh, that I have ever been around. And I think, uh, it really aligns with the work that we're trying to do in this school district in the direction we want to go in around attentionality in this area. So, Darryl Davis, we pass it over to you.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Bedell, and good evening, and good evening, Board Chair Manser, members of the board, and the audience. In the field of education, for decades, we've heard these questions repeated. How do we close the gap between children from high-income families and children from low-income families? Or how do we close the gap between white and brown and black children? The question we should be asking is, how do we create schools where the race or the class of the student does not dictate how well they will perform? In May of two thousand eighteen, the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors passed Board Policy Zero Point Zero to serve as an overarching policy to guide all the work that we do in the school system. And towards that end, this policy allows the board to hold itself accountable and the administration and all staff members accountable for building a culture of equity throughout all levels of our district so that we can do a better job of serving the entirety of the students that we're responsible for educating. So, one thing we'd like to point out before we move forward is really looking at this misconception that equity and equality mean the same thing, especially as it relates to education, and that these two terms can be used interchangeably, because they cannot. As we can see from the, uh, graph there on the screen, is that equality is giving every student the same thing, whereas equity is giving some students the additional support that they need. When we look at equality, we're looking at equal access, but what we want to focus on is equal outcomes, and to make sure that every student has the support that he or she needs in order to, uh, thrive. So, when we look at equality only, this only works if every student has a fair chance of winning the race. But we know that many of the students that we serve come with them carrying baggage, and in that baggage, there's some historical injustices that show itself in more contemporary, uh, ideas and beliefs about children, or with the policies and practices that schools may, uh, bring to them, which will, uh, im- impede their ability to win that race. And so, equity is really about fairness, and fair is not always equal. And so, we have to be prepared and willing to give those students who come to us, to us with less, to give them more. So, when we talk about educational equity, we see the definition there on the screen. Not going to read that to you, but on the next slide, do want to break down some of those words that you see in bold. So, equity is based on these four core constructs. And when we talk about access, we're talking about equal access to high-quality education, and how do we ensure that every student that we serve has access to all the opportunities, all of the programs, all of the, uh, all of the resources that Kansas City Public Schools has to offer? When we talk about representation, does every student see themselves in the curriculum? Do they see themselves in the visuals around the school system? It, are they, is the staff reflective of the student population? But then also, when we look at our clubs and activities and other, and other events throughout the school, do we see every student being able to participate in that? Third construct, and being able to participate meaningfully. That's not just the basic, just to give the student information, but how do we ensure that every student is participating meaningfully? Uh, we talked about the fact that if we give a student a bag of tools, that in itself is not enough to fix a broken car. We need students to engage beyond the classroom. We need students to have access to public speaking training, uh, access to, uh, other programs that will empower them to not only navigate the, uh, fullness that high school or, or schools in general have to offer, but then to also go on and transform their communities as adults. And then lastly, high outcomes. Uh, we all know that high outcomes in education is the goal, but we also know that some students need just a little bit more in order to reach that. Some students may need tutoring, some students may need ACT prep, some students may need a mentor in order to achieve that high outcome. And so, Board Policy Zero Point Zero requires us to look at everything we do from an equity lens. As you can see from the, uh, bulleted points up there, it requires everyone in the organization, from Superintendent Bedell to all staff members in the organization, to look at all of the gaps within our respective schools or in our departments. It's everyone's responsibility to disrupt or dismantle inequitable practices in our school system. And really, equity work is really like a relay race, in that it requires everyone to run their particular leg of the race, and if someone doesn't run their leg, then we're all at risk of failure. And so, equity must be a part of the DNA of Kansas City Public Schools. According to a recent Gallup poll, ninety-seven percent of principals and teachers felt that equity should be a national priority. As you see on the screen, there are a lot of barriers and obstacles to our ability to achieve that, whether it's racial bias, gender bias, unexamined practices, or outdated policies. These things keep a lot of districts from achieving that outcome. In Kansas City Public Schools, the equity work has already begun. There's a lot of, uh, programs and initiatives that have been launched, uh, over the last few years underneath Dr. Bedell's tenure, not going to read all of those, but they fall into four different buckets. Uh, I will highlight Avid, uh, is a significant investment that was launched last school year uh, to challenge young people to engage earlier, to prepare them for, uh, more rigorous instruction as they move throughout, uh, high school. Uh, we have the, uh, middle college program underneath our relationships and partnerships, uh, his, uh, Plaza Communitaria. Also, want to, uh, mention under professional development, we are in the process of planning for a citywide equity summit for later this November. This will be a KCPS-led event, but we will invite all educators from throughout the metro to participate. And we have, uh, many stakeholders who are investing in the KCPS vision to serve all students, but you'll, uh, learn more about that as we get closer to that. Also, one of the, uh, major initiatives that have come out, uh, within the last few years is our equity staffing model. And I know, uh, everyone is already fully aware of the state standards at tier one, but there has been investment to lower the class sizes according to school tiers. And you see those there, and we've had that presentation before. Alright, next, wanted to just lay out some of the initiatives and priorities that come out of the Office of Equity and Inclusion. I first must reiterate that equity is a part of everyone's responsibility, and so there's no department that does not touch equity in some way, but I wanted to just lay out some of the, uh, programs within, uh, this Department of Equity, Inclusion, and Innovation. Uh, launched a couple of years ago as one of, uh, Dr. Bedell's first equity initiatives, the mentoring program has grown to serve more than fifteen hundred students. Uh, we've trained and background checked, uh, more than a thousand mentors. Uh, we, we know that all students do not have equal access to caring adults and supports that can help them navigate school, and so mentoring, uh, is growing. And so, mentoring, uh, is growing strong in our school system. Uh, I should say, in addition to the individual mentors, the program requires that we nurture dozens of relationships with local churches and, uh, uh, not-for-profits that, that bring many of the, uh, mentors to us. Uh, we also nurture, uh, quite a few community, uh, partnerships that we feel are equitable in, in offering extended opportunities to our youth that we could not do alone. This year, in partnership with the Assessment Department and, uh, the IT Department, we're going to, for the first time, uh, deliver, uh, and provide to schools Equity Audits. In your folder, you see a sample audit for an elementary school. And this is an actual elementary school. Uh, with the help of my, uh, colleagues to my right, we've crossed out the name of that school. Wow, but this is, uh, just a, a sample. And so, an Equity Audit at the high school level. Oh, no, I didn't hear you. An Equity Audit at the high school level clearly would look a little bit different. But what we're looking for through the audits is to, um, do a better job of illustrating who may be overserved in certain areas, overrepresented in exceptional ed, overrepresented in suspensions, underrepresented in AP classes, underrepresented in gifted programs. And, and the audit that the, uh, schools will receive will help them align their goals and their particular plans. Uh, we're not going to spend too much time on the audit. We just wanted you to kind of get a visual. You can kind of see from that particular, uh, school, you know, uh, the percent of young ladies that serve, uh, suspension days, uh, what, uh, demographic that is. So, we'll, we'll move forward. Also, we've started this year implicit bias training for all new employees. Uh, thus far, we've had over two hundred, uh, employees trained. Uh, this training will continue to be a part of our new employee onboarding training that happens every Tuesday, uh, is it Monday and Tuesday? Monday and Tuesday throughout the school year. And, uh, what we want individuals to walk away with knowing is that it doesn't mean that someone is a racist or that someone is intentionally discriminating because we all have bias. And the fact that it operates beneath our awareness is what makes it implicit. And so, individuals will not only learn why implicit bias exists, but then furthermore, and more importantly, what we can do to manage it and to not let it control, uh, our decisions as it relates to how we educate children. Also, we're building out the Innovation and Post-Secondary Programming. This is going to help us, uh, increase the number of students who are graduating college-ready. Uh, will also increase the number of students who apply and receive scholarships. These programs will assist students in writing college essays and re- in researching, uh, colleges, not only in our state, but across the country. And then also, um, I, I, I should point out that we are in the process of selecting a Director of Innovation and Post-Secondary Programming. Uh, this is not a, uh, new budget position. This is a position that was approved in the previous budget that will repurpose for this, uh, purpose of starting our programs as early as the fourth grade. And then lastly, even though there's a lot of work that's already begun, we have a plan over the next two years to really, uh, move the district forward on creating an Equity Plan, which will then, in a couple of years, be presented to this body, uh, for adoption. So, why an Equity Plan? A plan will help us develop that common language and focus. Uh, it will be aligned to the strategic plan, uh, that the district just recently went through within the last couple of years. And it will be aligned to the strategic plan's key actions that speak to equity. And you see those action plans there, which, uh, ten point one ensures that each school and department result, uh, develops a results-driven, equity-focused actual, annual action plan. So, this plan that's in our strategic plan, that the schools will create, will be aligned to the district's Equity Plan. Also, our strategic plan requires that we look at data to drive all of the decisions that we make, which is why the Equity Audits are so important. So, part of this process is really taking some key leaders through, uh, and individuals and stakeholders through, uh, training, which will then allow us to transform the way we educate, uh, students in the school system, but then also mobilize efforts for everyone else to get behind that. Uh, this is in partnership, and I, you'll see an MOU come through at the next, uh, board meeting, uh, is in partnership with the, uh, Midwestern Plains Equity Center or the MAPS Center. These are some of the, uh, goals that we hope to achieve through, uh, putting together an Equity Plan Steering Committee, uh, Task Force. Alright, so, uh, over the next couple of years, we'll have two groups. So, one group is the key leaders that will really raise the banner and importance of equity in our school system. And then there will be a larger group of diverse stakeholders. There will be a parent, uh, community member. We'll have members, uh, from our Exceptional Education Department, our Language Services Department, Curriculum Department, uh, principal, uh, teachers, so that we have diverse perspectives as a part of this Steering Committee, which will then guide the Equity Planning Process over the next couple of years. Ending in September of twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty-one. If we can get it done sooner, we will. But as Dr. Bedell told me, this is not a race. We want to do it, uh, properly. And so, as we've gone through and demonstrated the, uh, what we've done throughout our school system for equity and what we plan to do over the next couple of years, we've come to this end in that equity is about reducing the predictability of who succeeds and who fails in school. And so, uh, with that end, I'm, uh, anxious and excited to be a part of this work as we look to close gaps, uh, in our school system and to serve all children.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to open up for questions. I think I'm going to start it at this end of the, the room for once.
Winners first. Um, Dr. Davis, thank you for, uh, thank you for the, the presentation, but more importantly, for focusing on this work. It's super important. It's critical to our kids' success and, and, uh, so thank you for pouring your heart and soul into this as I, as I know you and many others are. Couple of super quick questions. How many high schools have AP classes?
Uh, right now, uh, all high schools have AP classes. And we have, uh, some who have extended their offerings this year. And one of the, um, uh, purposes for the position of, um, Innovation and Post-Secondary Programming is to further explore opportunities to expand, uh, dual-credit classes as well as AP, and then also work with the IB coordinators at Lincoln and Lincoln Middle and FLA.
And, and let me chime in because, uh, that's a great question because that, that I don't believe was the case. Uh, we made that a requirement this past school year, if I'm not mistaken, that we would offer AP classes at every single one of our schools. And that was one of the reasons why we introduced AP Human Geography to start with our ninth graders and then moved up from there. And now, we have AP US, US History. I know I tend to get them mixed up, but we're gradually growing that out as we move up with cohorts of students and, um, so, yes, sir.
And, and, and one of the things we're looking at now is not only ensuring that everyone has access to the classes, but we're also looking to see who's actually participating and taking advantage of that opportunity and how we go about identifying and, uh, insisting that students, uh, rise to the level of taking more rigorous classes available to them.
Good. Uh, next question, so sort of on the, how do you measure success? So, if you could point to maybe one or two metrics over the next two years that you'll evaluate yourselves on in terms of how successful is the Equity Plan? What, what would be a couple of those metrics?
Yeah, so, uh, good question. So, through the Equity Planning Process, we will identify gaps that exist through all of our departments, whether it's, uh, a more diverse workforce, whether it's, uh, closing the disparity in our discipline. Uh, when we look at our discipline data, uh, one demographic, uh, heavily, you know, seventy-nine percent bears the, uh, the weight of suspensions in our school district. And we look at attendance disparities. We are going to look at the data across the board and identify those gaps and then, more importantly, put forth the plans to close those gaps. And so, as we close those gaps within the next five years, that's how we'll measure success. And through the planning process, we'll lay out benchmarks where we believe we should have closed it by this amount over one year to the next.
And, and one of the things that we can speak to, if we just want to go back to your AP question, Mr. Hogan, we increased the number of students this year. I think we increased the number of students who took the exam by roughly a hundred and one students? Somewhere in that range, a hundred and one more stu- a hundred and what?
Well, a hundred and seventeen students sat and took that AP, took AP exams this year, more than we had in the previous year, which also resulted in us having a double. Wasn't a lot, but we had a double in the number of kids who scored three, four, and five. And we, what we hope will happen is, next year, we'll see these kids who scored a one, perhaps now that they've gotten a taste of this and actually have a, a, a level of belief that they can actually do this rigorous work. We want to see that move to a two. We want to see more ones move to twos. We want to see twos move to threes. And I think those are easy ways that we can weigh whether or not what we're doing is making a difference. And then ultimately, then report back, like George K. Baum is the funder of, of what we're trying to do with Avid and a big reason why we've seen this increase. But we want to be able to give them an annual report. Here's what your money is doing. Here's the difference that it's making for our kids that would not otherwise be available without those supports so they can continue to feel that their investments, uh, are making a difference and that they will continue to invest in our school system.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. Um, since he stole my metrics question, which I kind of anticipated he would. One, one, and this is really more a request than a question. And it is, as you are developing over the next two years, the, the broader framework for the plan, it would be very helpful from a governance standpoint to understand what are the markers that you will look for that help us see that we're institutionalizing the equity framework?
Yes, yes. Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Let me, let me answer that one. I, and that's a great point. And I think, uh, we have to make sure that we do that. But there's also a charge that I will pu- put in front of this board that I learned in Ithaca. And having an opportunity to spend time with that superintendent's board members, they said that one thing that they had to do that required a tremendous amount of time and work was they had to go in, even though they had created a new Equity Policy, and I shared this with Ms. Manser. We got this new Equity Policy, but we have administrative policies and we have board policies that may need to be unpacked because they may contradict the work that we're trying to do if they're written in an oppressive nature. And there's going to be work on both ends that's going to have to take place if we truly want to see this district embed this Equity Policy and everything that we do. So, I think there's going to be work on both sides on that one if we really truly want to make this happen.
And, uh, Dr. Bedell, that's an excellent point. Uh, just a brief, uh, skimming of our current administrative policy. I did see a policy that has not been updated since two thousand and one that speaks to student grooming and that students have to be well-groomed and it cannot, uh, uh, offend others. But it's really subjective as to what does that mean? And so, grooming may be different depending on, uh, the culture and ethnicity of the various students because what may grow naturally for them may not, uh, fall within that, that very broad definition. I'm sure that some of you probably saw that news story, uh, from a, uh, Georgia school district we would, uh, not name, where, uh, students, they actually had in the hallway, this is appropriate, uh, hairstyles, uh, for young men and, and young women in the school. These are inappropriate, uh, styles. And so, we definitely want to update our policies to make sure it, it shows inclusivity and that every student is valued and supported from where their, uh, respective backgrounds.
Thank you. Mr. Barca?
Uh, yeah, obviously, everything that the winning side over there said, apparently. Um, but a, a, a couple other, uh, I guess, questions. Specifically, I know that you said that you're kind of in the initial cups of this. I think this is awesome to understand at this level what's happening in our schools. Um, I guess I'm, I'm questioning as you develop the next phases of these, I, I hate to say thresholds, benchmarks. How do you tell whether you're successfully achieving what your goals are in terms of the quantity within each of these categories, right? And so, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know how you get, uh, we are successfully meeting our gifted mark per se.
Yeah, so, uh, the gr- great question. So, one of the things that we will do through this process is really examine our particular practices within our schools. Some of the, uh, gaps that we see really come from us not questioning some of our practices. For example, uh, we know that high-quality instruction, high rigor, is going to lead us to higher outcomes. Uh, but if some of our, uh, assumptions say that this is the level at which we can expect from, uh, certain students, we won't challenge them to their full capability. And so, we have to examine those practices. We also need to, uh, now, we have to look at what are the tasks that we're asking students to do? Uh, we have to look at what type of feedback are we giving students? Uh, I think most of the educators, uh, have, have witnessed where a one student who has a stu- a teacher pull them to the side afterward to say, you know, Adam, I, you turned in that C paper. I expect you, I, I know you could do better. Did you study? I didn't. Okay, next time you study. And guess what happens? Next time, he turns in a B. Great job. I knew you can do it. The next time, turns in an A. It's a self-fulfilling prophecy. But if we're not giving that sort of feedback and high expectation to all students, then we get what we expect, uh, that we, you know, a, a system will produce, uh, its own outcomes.
I will say, at the highest level, there's a couple of things that we can also do to truly be able to measure impact and effectiveness. One is, we probably need to, at some point, come together and maybe do a quick workshop. And we think about what are the KPIs? What are the key performance indicators that we want to have attached to this Equity Policy? Because that's something we didn't do because we adopted the policy after we had already conducted that work. Secondly, we have a scorecard. And if we need to figure out what metrics on the scorecard we want to look at in this area, whether it's quantitative or qualitative, I think we can all decide and come to an agreement on. Those are the things that, you know, we want to make sure that we continue to monitor, um, to assure that we're really doing the work that we, 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 we are looking to do with, with this particular piece.
Yes, yes. Ab- ab- absolutely. I have a long list of ass and, and, uh, if I wa- if I was a singer, I'd be the Keith Sweat of the, uh, district and begging, begging for resources.
Yes, he does. And I said, Darryl, you need to get up out my office.
Thank you. Dr. Jones?
My, uh, so I have a comment, quick comment and a question. Um, my comment is that I always want to frame a discussion about equity when we talk about education in terms that's, that, uh, remind us that the problems that we see in our schools, the, the inequities here, they merely mirror the inequities that we see in our community. So, the same stuff that's contributing to the violence that we're seeing, people can't find affordable housing, all of these things come into the school district. And so, we're not, I know you, I'm not telling y'all, y'all already know.
Yes.
Uh, but this is just reminding that we are seated within that context. And so, that's, you know, it's, it's not like a vacuum.
Yes.
Um, and I, my question was, um, like, I know that there are some schools, some buildings, some administrators, that, uh, their scorecard may not necessarily look like the sample we saw. So, they have more equitable placement in gifted classes. They have fewer suspensions. Um, and their numbers don't look as skewed. And so, I'm wondering, um, do you guys think that that would be a, a way for you to kind of set some benchmarks and create some learning communities or something so that people can learn and say, well, what are they doing at that elementary? Why they hardly have people suspended, but this one has a lot? Or it's so unbalanced? So, I'm just wondering if you had that kind of comparison?
Yeah, so, then, great question. And, uh, we've looked at data in high and low, um, uh, lower-performing schools. All of, uh, most of our schools are experiencing growth. Uh, but in each of the schools, the gaps may be different. But even at a school where, you know, most of the students have high GPAs and so forth, we can still find gaps in certain areas, you know? So, if the increase in AP or IB classes is taking place across the board, if we look at how students score, there may be a gap. And so, through an equity lens, what supports, additional supports do we need to have in place to ensure that every- to ensure that everyone is increasing that score? And so, the gaps may look different from school to school, but it's up, it will be up to each uh, principal and, and um, and their teams to examine that audit and find their particular gaps. And so, those, those uh, plans will actually be individualized according to that.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Um, you took my, not, didn't take my question, but I was thinking along the same lines and I'm great. We, I'm so excited to see that we have a plan and that you've got um, these next two years that you're going to be working on that. But I'm always like, what can we do now? What are we going? So it sounds to me as if you're going to utilize um, these um, individual data sets to then start the work in the schools. And I'm assuming Dr. Bedell and Dr. Shepherd, that's taking place with the principals when they do their monthly data dives. Will this then be, become a part of those sorts of discussions in, I mean, not, maybe not now, but eventually, um?
They will, and they'll be a part of the data consults. And then also, when the schools write their respective action plans, we'll make sure that their equity goals are also included in, in their plans.
When they're discussing this. So um, one of the things that I noticed when I was looking at this um, of what we're tracking, um, and I don't know if this, um, if they talked about this at your workshop, the equity workshop, but I do wonder sometimes if there's a disparity also in students taking advantage of uh, the extras that we offer. So these tend to be along the lines of discipline health, special ed, but we have, I think there's also great disparity on the other end of who's participating in the extracurricular, the athletic, um, leadership opportunities within the school.
Yes.
You know, and those may be race and class, but they also may be gender specific. And so, things like that, I would want to make sure we were also keeping an eye on.
Yes, and thank you for that. And we are uh, looking at who's participating in those activities. So we're constantly monitoring, not only for uh, Title IX uh, compliance, but also just to make sure that we're increasing opportunities for, say, young ladies to participate in athletics. And uh, you may have heard that uh, this year, uh, for the first time that I've ever uh, known of, uh, we have a school that will have a softball team. Uh, we're starting this year at Lincoln and as we build out the um, I, I guess, the interest at other schools, we're going to add that. But then also, we're looking at activities such as robotics teams and other STEM related fields and who's in that, in those programs. So we are going to look at that as part of the audit as well.
And let me just add in there, if you go back to the core equity constructs and it's almost kind of this framework model that we're looking at utilizing, it, we talked about that earlier when you look at um, meaningful participation and looking at who actually gets to participate and who doesn't. And so, that, that is going to be a part of our framework as we develop this out um, to make sure that we are getting students and, you know, really encouraging and pushing students to be more inclusive and to be more involved in, in some of our extracurricular offerings. But that's what this framework would also do too, to help us. And I think that's, you know, I talk a lot about systems. Systems are critical. Uh, when we think about the Richard Elmer Instructional Core and what we've been able to do with that and my, you know, Darryl talked about that, Dr. Davis talked about that a few, earlier today. Just putting the systems in place, it allows for us to operate more seamlessly. And I think we have to do the same thing with the, with this work. And we think that this will be the model that we would utilize.
And if, and if I could just add that, even though we're going to engage in a two-year uh, planning process, will, which will outline some uh, metrics and uh, goals and benchmarks, the work doesn't stop. And so, even until everyone is educated and informed on the why of certain things or why we should make certain decisions, we still uh, can control the, our ability to maybe change policies that uh, maybe lessen the chance that someone could be, you know, uh, say unfairly held back in any of our uh, institutions here within Kansas City Public Schools. So those are things we could do even while everyone uh, throughout the organization gets the equity training.
I also wanted to say, and I want to make sure our community hear, hear this loud and clear, we've been engaged in this equity work since I got here. And there are tremendous amount of things that we've done to eliminate inequities for every single student in this school district that's available for students to take advantage of, whether it's the intentionality around the tier-three model and how we fund our schools, equity funding model, whether it's the partnerships that we've created with all of our businesses as outlined in our back, in our State of the School uh, breakfast event where we have been able to remove a tremendous amount of barriers for our kids in order for them to have a more level playing field. And so, I, I, I don't want people to think we're just starting to do this work. We've been doing this work. What we're trying to do now is institutionalize this through a policy framework and a systemic framework that will allow for it. We want it to be built in a way where it will be hard, kind of like Obamacare. You, it's going, it's going to be some problems trying to tear this down by the time we get through. But we need time to really institutionalize what we're trying to do here.
And, and thank you for those remarks because um, as I, I've sat here and I had the benefit of participating in the development of the equity policy. And I feel that over the past year plus, many of the investments that you have, we have made collectively and um, the work in place around access to higher, uh, higher level college readiness coursework and um, class size. And many, many of the investments that have come, that we are now seeing come to fruition and are really yielding fruit, were investments that were based in the equity conversations that we were having a year ago. So it's very affirming. I think I would like to echo what my colleagues have all said. I think there are, um, because we do have a um, very useful sco- s- scorecard tool. And I think there may be some interim um, outcome indicators that might lend themselves well to adapting for that scorecard as you develop a more full-fledged plan. Many of the items you've noted here under the equity work underway in KCPS are items that in fact we're monitoring now. You know, and these kinds of things, they are sort of components of your equity work. So I, not a question, but just an encouragement in that realm. Thank you, everyone. Are there any additional questions that anyone has for this evening on this item? Thank you. The next item of business will be the regular business items. And the chair calls on Dr. Bedell to introduce these items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm going to take my time on these. Two, four, six. That's an inside joke. They over there laughing. So um, the couple of items that we're going to ask the board to take action on, we shared with you today. We had postponed the MCC Manual Tech uh, School MOU. We will be ready to bring that to the board for approval on our phase two of that discussion with MCC. The next two items I'm extremely proud of, and I failed to mention this at the uh, State of the Schools, was uh, medical insurance renewal for two thousand and twenty and dental insurance plan approval. Uh, what we do know at this point is that this will, our faculty and staff members will not incur any additional charges. There will be no uptick in their costs and their insurance and dental plans. So the pay raises that they did receive gets to go in their pockets. So we're, we're really excited about that. Thank you, thank you, um, Ms. Quinley. Um, we will come to the board for bid and contract approval for the twenty-nine oh-one truce bu- buildout. Um, we will come to you for the IT staffing contract and then Franklin Operations Center renovation contract. These are items that we've already received funding approval, but now we're ready to move on with the work. That concludes the items for, business items for August twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. And again, thank you for kicking us off on a fantastic week. It's, it's exciting and I know there's um, we're just, we're very early in the game on this week, but it, it portends only good things. So at, with this, this brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for this evening. If there is no further obje- objections, the meeting is adjourned.
And I, I know the meeting is adjourned, Madam Chair. No, this is serious. And we talked about this because I've, I've been frustrated, but I think we have had a tremendous amount of, of, of deaths in our community. And um, students in and out of our school system, adults that reside within our community, outside of the boundaries of our community. And I would just ask everyone if we can just give a five or ten second moment of silence uh, for those, those individuals in our community that have lost their life to senseless violence and most importantly, to those families that have to continue to suffer uh, with this. It's been a real tough day on me. And I think you, you could probably see that at the beginning of this board meeting. But if we can just do five to ten seconds, just a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. I appreciate that closing note. Thank you.